I'd like to call the April 18th, 2023 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. All right, I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening." I also wanted to announce that any members of the public who utilized public transportation or the county's parking garage to attend the meeting this evening can get validation for your parking or transit by seeing one of the officers who's with us this evening on your way out, and that validation is valid for today only. Okay, we come to the consent agenda. Do any members of the public have any questions about any items that are on the county commissioners' consent agenda? Do any commissioners have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
All in favor, and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. We've had a number of folks sign up for public comment. I'm gonna go through that list. And when I call your name, just you can come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to address the board. You'll get an orange light or a yellow light when you have about 30 seconds left, and a red light when your three minutes is up. And we ask that you discontinue your public comments when your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. And once I get through the list, if there are other folks who would like to address the board, there'll be an opportunity at that time as well. The first person that signed up is DeeDee Stiles.
Another thing that enters into the discussion of protecting the mountains from overdevelopment so we will have enough water is, of course, property tax revenue. I know all too well what happens with property tax when someone builds a big expensive house up on the mountain. The county gets increased property tax dollars from that lot, and not just that lot. When an expensive house is built anywhere, the assessment and from that, the property tax goes up for all property in that area. Believe me, I know about that. And the county does need money to provide a good place for its citizens to live and work. But there is something money cannot do. Watch this. Here I have two nice new $20 bills. No matter how hard I squeeze them, no water comes out. Because you don't get water from money, you get water from the mountains. No amount of money will put water into the creeks and streams when they start to run dry. What puts water into the creeks and streams is the rain and the mountains working together as they have done for millions of years. If you allow the mountains to be crippled by overdevelopment to the point that they cannot do their part of the job, then when the drought comes, the creek will dry up, the farmer's fields will dry up, and the spigots will start to run dry. Now, the city might decide to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and appropriate someone's land to build another reservoir. An extra reservoir would help ensure water for drinking and washing, but it wouldn't do anything for the farm fields or the people downriver who count on the water from the mountains to keep the river flowing with enough water for them to use. Or, we could protect the watersheds of our creeks and streams from overdevelopment. Then, when the droughts come, the creeks would still flow. Farmers could water their fields, and the river could support those farther downstream. Money cannot do that. Only rain and undisturbed mountains can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name, is Heather Cavaner.
Thank you Buncombe County Parks and Commissioners for considering adding Deverview Mountain Park to our community. My name is Heather Cavaner, and this is...
Poppy Cavaner.
And we live between Johnston Boulevard and Cub Place. We look out on Deverview Mountain, so it holds a special place in our heart. Well over 17 years ago, possibly even longer than that, I used to live off of Lester, and I could access those trails. I don't know if anybody has ever accessed those trails that are in here, but the lookout at the end of this trail is gorgeous. I don't have any pictures of it, I wish I did, but I hope it gets opened up to the public again, because it's gorgeous. I remember being able to take my dog out there, being able to take my mom out there. It's a rolling hike, so people of all ages and abilities are able to do that hike, which I think is really important. Families today are busier than ever. I can speak for myself, I work in Haywood County at a school, and by the time we get home, it's after five. It would be really nice to access a trail during the weeknights. As you can see, getting fresh air is great for me and my kid. And so, my neighbors and the community seem to be really excited about the possibility of accessing this trail. One of my neighbors, whose dad has knee issues, and he works a lot of hours, is very excited about him having the possibility of seeing a nice view without having to do strenuous hike, which can be hard to find in this area. Poppy, do you want to park?
Yeah.
And why?
Because we need more places. We need more land for kids to play, and I want to go hiking with my mommy.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you both. All right, next is Nancy Edgerton.
Good evening. I accidentally signed up, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but since I'm here, I would like to add my support for Deverview Mountain for really the reasons for water and for letting our kids experience nature, especially in that part of the county. I just think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that this kind of property doesn't come up, and we have this opportunity, and I hope that we just grab it and make it open for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks Nancy. Next, Kyle Schut. Appreciate your honesty. No problem. Ben Lavi? Wobble? Nathan Morrison?
Evening. I'm also speaking to encourage this land, the Deverview Mountain property, to be set aside as a park. I live down on the south side of this mountain and have gotten permission from the previous owner to walk up there and kind of just keep a lookout, I guess is what he asked. So I've walked up there a fair bit, and it's gorgeous. It's amazing. It's beautiful. I also walk on the west side and am a kind of caretaker for about 40 acres that is adjacent to a lot of this land. And so, to think about that amount of land coming into some sort of conservation is really exciting, because as was mentioned before, it doesn't happen often so close to town, and that the public would really benefit. And that's everybody, the public, Asheville, not just developers or landowners. So I encourage this process to unfold, and hopefully I'll continue to be able to walk up there. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, are you Ben? Yeah, come on up, Ben. No problem.
Yes, so I am a resident of Deverview Road. The mountain overlooks my house, so it's about a quarter-mile walk from my front door. Similarly, I had permission from the previous property owner to hike up there, so I've spent quite a bit of time on the property, and it is very beautiful. And initially, I received a notice in the mail saying that the property had changed hands, and I was like, oh, here we go. They're putting a high-end subdivision up there. Like, it was nice while it lasted. And when the news came to me that there was a possibility that this piece of property might be conserved and open to the public, I was more than relieved. Because if you haven't been up there, it is a beautiful piece of property. And as I'm sure many of you are well aware, that a lot of the neighborhoods immediately surrounding that area are a bit socio-economically struggling. And I think investing in public infrastructure in neighborhoods like this are pretty in line with the values of this Board and the local government. Furthermore, just to appeal to the pragmatic aspect of it, that view, if this becomes open to the public, I mean, that view will sell Asheville. I mean, I can't imagine, you know, the TDA not putting that view of downtown from that angle on a flyer. So the economic value of it extends, you know, even equally with the just inherent beauty of the spot. And as a resident of the neighborhood, I'd stand behind it. I intend to volunteer my time to help make this happen, and would love to have it in my backyard.
All right, thanks Ben. All right, the next person, I think it's Hanny Mueter? Something along those lines? Sorry.
Hello, my name is Hanny Mutter. I was born and raised just across the county line in the Bethel-Canton area of Haywood County, and I now reside with my family in Buncombe County. Thank you county commissioners and staff for considering a public park on Deverview Mountain for the community. I work for Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy, primarily working with landowners in the Haywood and Jackson areas. And over the past five years, I've had the privilege of working with the Town of Canton, Haywood County, and community members to help bring to life Chestnut Mountain Nature Park, a 450-acre public park near the Haywood-Buncombe line off of Asheville Highway in Canton. I want to share a bit about my experience with Chestnut Mountain Park, which provides a great local recent example of how conservation and recreation can work together, and how nonprofit land trusts, communities, local governments, and private and public funders can come together to create a large acreage public park. About five years ago, S.H.C. noticed the 450-acre Chestnut Mountain property just outside of Canton was on the market. And much like the Deverview tract, we noted the large size of the property as well as its very close proximity to local population centers. These two factors combined, large acreage and proximity, are exciting and rare. Much like Buncombe County, Haywood County has the forested public land accesses on the outskirts of the county. There isn't much opportunity for getting out in nature experiences close to town. We knew that large acreage public parks closer to town centers were prioritized in Haywood County's recreation plan, and we approached the Town of Canton in Haywood County to ask if S.H.C. can help raise funds to secure the tract. Is this something that you all in the community would be interested in? Owning and operating this land as a public park? The response from the town and county leaders was overwhelmingly positive. They asked a lot of good questions about operations, costs, and management, and realized the potential of leveraging. What state, federal, private, and local funds could be brought to the table for build-out? The town, in partnership with Equinox Environmental, engaged in rounds of public input, and many, many individuals responded and participated in this process, pointing to the excitement and demand for the park. Communities thrive with green spaces to enjoy, relax, and recreate. In Buncombe and the surrounding area, we have a small tightening window to secure land for public access before it gets broken up and parceled, and much, much more expensive and time-intensive to piece together in the future. Currently, the triangle area down east, where development expansion is more built out than Buncombe, local governments are having to pay much more money and expend more resources to try to piece together tracts to create public parks, which are high in demand from constituents, that if could have secured several large tracts before they were broken up. Acting now when there is an opportunity for large acreage park acquired through one acquisition is a good and efficient way to expend resources.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and the next person is Karen McNeil.
Hi, everyone. I am also here to speak in favor of Deverview Mountain becoming a park. I'm gonna first speak from my perspective as a nurse and the health benefits of interacting with nature, including reducing stress, decreasing blood pressure, increased physical activity, and also increased healing capacity. I want to follow that with the location of this particular amazing property being on a bus route, I believe, and also near public housing. There are numerous studies that link health disparities to lack of access to green space, and this is one way that Buncombe County could really move even more towards environmental equity. And lastly, I just want to speak as a longtime resident of Buncombe County. I came here in '91 to go to college, and I never really left. And we've seen a lot of changes, and I love this town, and it's been really, really good to me. And one way that I can think of to give back is to try to advocate for the really special places we have in this county. And we've lost access to some of them along the way, which is just part of development, but this is a really special place and a gem that I think deserves protection and accessibility to the public for future generations. So, thank you.
Thanks Karen. And the last person that signed up is Jamie Urban.
Hi there, I'm Jamie Urban. I'm also here speaking in support of creating a park on Deverview Mountain. Sort of speaking from two perspectives. The first just being someone who's lived in this area on and off for 10 or 15 years now. I used to go hiking up at Deverview, though we always called it Spivey Mountain, quite frequently about 10 years ago or so, when it was kind of the public knowledge that it was okay to hike up there. And I've always thought that that was one of the best opportunities to go hiking within the immediate area of Asheville, and I still think that now that this is getting considered as a park. Like, this is Asheville's best, and Buncombe County's best opportunity to have a world-class hiking park, and there aren't really other ones. Like, this is our opportunity to protect this thing. The second kind of hat I'm wearing here today is I work for an organization called Outdoor Alliance. We are a national coalition of advocacy organizations representing human-powered outdoor recreation. So that's whitewater paddling, rock climbing, surfing, backcountry skiing. And I do a lot of work on access to recreation through policy. And we're especially enthusiastic about equitable access to outdoor recreation, so making sure recreation's available to people who may not have the resources or the ability to go to a remote backcountry area up into the Shining Rock Wilderness or something like that. This Deverview Mountain project is one of the best examples I can think of of an equitable access project. It's right near a relatively low-income neighborhood. It's relatively close to a bus line, and this could be a place where a lot of people experience nature for the first time and get, increase their connection with the mountains here. So I'll leave it at that, encourage you to protect it as a park, and look forward to hopefully hiking there again someday. Thanks.
Thanks Jamie, thanks to everyone who signed up. Are there any other, is there anyone else who would like to address?
Kim, I'm so sorry, I overlooked your name. My mistake. Come on up.
Was not intentional, I promise.
That's okay, that's okay. Good evening, county commissioners and staff. My name is Kim Lemmons, for those that don't know me. I am a lifelong resident of Buncombe County and grew up in Fairview, but have lived in the Irwin community for 45 years. I can probably say ditto, 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 ditto to all the things that were said. But before I get to that project, I do want to say on behalf of the Buncombe County Board of Education that I am a member of and proudly represent the Irwin District. I know it's budget season for you all. I appreciate more than you know what you do for public education. You've got big decisions to make. I've talked to several of you, and I know you do support the 22,000-plus kids in Buncombe County. Our certified and non-certified employees work extremely hard. We know that we're your largest budget that you have, and we just appreciate you taking care of our kids and our teachers and staff. So thank you. Now, I'll get over to talking about my Irwin community, because I am very proud to represent it. Someone said, well, most of you said Deverview Mountain. Well, because I've been in the Irwin community for 45 years, I will tell you that my husband, who graduated in 1976, called it Spivey Mountain. So there's all kinds of stories about Spivey Mountain, but they were... To go there, it is a beautiful place. One of the things I will tell you is that there's 342 acres. I had the opportunity to go up on top of that mountain and see the view. I had been there many years ago, but it is amazing. When you go out there and stand, and you can see Pisgah, you can see downtown Asheville, you can see Irwin. It is amazing. What it would do for the community, I think we would have tourism increase. I think a lot of what people said about being in our low-income Johnston area is a real plus for us in the Irwin community and district. And quite frankly, I met with principals, the Irwin principals this morning, who said, what a great place for kids to have some educational opportunities there. So to be able to be a part of building this park, to be able to do things, that's exciting. They could work at that park. There's just so many factors that I would hope that you would take in consideration to consider this park, and come out and visit the schools. I do want to thank Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Whitesides, who's been in our schools and know what our teachers are facing. And being able to take those kids outdoors and to the Spivey Mountain, Deverview Mountain Park would be amazing. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kim. All right, other folks who would like to address the Board? Josh, come on up.
Hello, my name is Josh Kelly. I'm a resident of West Asheville, and I'm here representing Mountain True. First, I want to thank the Buncombe Commissioners and the Buncombe Parks and Recreation for even considering this item tonight. And then, just personally, I'm a Madison County boy. I grew up out in the woods. And when I first moved to Buncombe County, I moved to Oak Crest Drive right off of Deverview, and got to talking to some of my neighbors. And Barry and Greg said, hey man, if you like to go out in the woods, you should go up Spivey. It's really cool up there, we like to ride our motorbikes up there, it's awesome. And so I hiked up there, rode my bike up there, explored it quite a bit over the years between 1997 and sometime around 2010, when the access was lost. And it's a nice place, it is a great place to experience nature close to Asheville. And it is very accessible to a working class, very Appalachian, very kind of an Appalachian urban neighborhood. It's a very cool area. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think that if Buncombe County doesn't act, it's not clear who will. And I think if Buncombe County does act, there will be an abundance of public and potentially private money that can help close this deal. And I just want to offer Mountain True support and help in that regard, if it's needed. So just thank you all very much, and I wish the county success in closing this deal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come to you, and then you can go next.
Thank you all for your consideration. My name's Benjamin Gilmer, and my son Kai right here. We, so I'm representing our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is five minutes from the base of the mountain. We also, like many people in this room, hiked the trails during, between 2006 and 2010. Kai hiked the trail when he was two weeks old, and we would hike it almost three or four times a week until 2010. Like everyone has said, this place is a true jewel. It would be a travesty to not secure this land for our people. Our neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks. We don't have parks. Notice that Deverview low-income housing would have incredible access to this place. So it's a place that, if we lost it, it would be something we would regret forever, especially in our neighborhood. And I do agree that people in the community in our neighborhood would take an active role in trying to preserve, protect, and help support for the long-term nature of this community, which will truly benefit from this incredible mountain. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both for being here. All right, come on up.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you commissioners and Parks and Recreation staff for considering this amazing opportunity. So I'm here, my name is Bradley Spiegel. I'm representing Mountain Bizworks and the Made by Mountains Partnership and a program that we're managing called Building Outdoor Communities, which is actually supporting 25 counties in the Quala Boundary to really help them strategically invest in outdoor assets and to do it in a sustainable way that embraces stewardship principles and leave-no-trace principles. But one of the things that excites me the most is, you know, as Buncombe County is about to launch a master plan, it's, this is a really amazing opportunity to brand Buncombe County as an outdoor community. And there's just kind of echoing all the benefits of the accessibility and the economic impact. And instead of people having to leave Buncombe County to go spend money and go recreate, they can do it right here, within a very short distance from their home. So that's so exciting. And I think what excites me most is I'm surrounded by so many one-year-olds in my life right now. So like, to think of just the opportunity for future generations, for this to be the place that really educates them about nature. And yeah, I think bringing that, there's just so many dots to connect with environmental education and sustainable tourism. So thank you very much, and good luck with this decision and the planning.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes ma'am.
Hi, my name is Michelle Pollezzi, and I work for Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. I've lived in Asheville for 16 years, and I moved here for my dream job. I've lived in Asheville for 16 years, and I moved here for my dream job, to be the Land Protection Director for Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. I bought my home in West Asheville in 2012, and when I moved to town, I explored all the big places that people love about living in this region, like the Highlands of Roan, Mount Mitchell State Park, the Blue Ridge Parkway, and so many more beautiful places. I also became intimately familiar with the places closer to home that were more easily accessible for my outdoor recreation, like Montford Park, Richmond Hill, Bent Creek, and Carrier Park. The first time I was taken up to Deverve Mountain, I could not believe the gem in my own backyard. Having access to a view like that so close to home is incredibly special. I have hiked to its overlook many times, notably once after an ice storm, and every tree branch was frozen and glistening. And remember when we used to get ice in Asheville? Another time, I took a break from the heat and crowds downtown during Bell Share Weekend to go up to Deverve Mountain. And here we are today, talking about making this special place a public park. I'm so grateful to the county staff and commissioners for considering this. And I think we are very lucky that we had a conservation-minded individual that was able to purchase the property to take the immediate threat of development off the market. But I want to note that that development threat is not disappeared in its temporary ownership right now. Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy is working together with the county and a lot of public and private partners to raise a significant amount of money to purchase that land. And if we are not successful, the temporary owner will have to play, recover his investment and put a residential subdivision on that mountain. A public park on Deverve Mountain will provide a place for people right here in Buncombe County to get immersed in nature, leave the stresses of our lives for a few moments, and savor where we live. It also will protect significant headwater streams and natural habitat, and I just want to urge the county commissioners to consider the placement of a park there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Travis Borley. Thank you guys so much for having this time for us to voice our opinions. I didn't come here preparing to speak, but really got motivated by my fellow Buncombe County citizens and just want to get on public record in voicing my support for this public park. I have been a resident in Asheville here for 10 years plus, former UNC Asheville graduate, actually wore my environmental science T-shirt here today just by chance. And I've been working for the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy for the past seven years, and over those seven years have seen, like all of us, a ton of development, growing in western North Carolina, which can, can pain us sometimes. And I've also seen our organization and other land trusts protect, you know, I think roughly around 20,000 acres in the seven years that I've been with SHC. And of those 20,000 acres, I can't think of a more strategic 300 acres that we've played a hand in protecting. And so the job is far from over, but really, you know, I think of all the incredible projects that we've taken apart in, and I think this one would stand at the top of our list of accomplishments that we could, we could accomplish together. And then, just another perspective that I have is that one of a photographer, I'm a mildly professional photographer, striving. But, but when I think of North Carolina, I think of iconic images of North Carolina. The, the main one that comes to mind is the viaduct, the Blue Ridge Parkway near Boone, North Carolina, that, that beautiful curving bridge. I think this view from Deverve Mountain would really give it a run for its money and would be iconic in the landscape of outdoor recreation opportunities in western North Carolina. So consider it. All right. Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, thanks, thanks to everyone who came out, and everybody took time to share their thoughts about the Deverve Spivey Mountain project and proposal. We'll be taking that up under consideration in just a few minutes. So appreciate everyone taking time to come out and share your thoughts. All right. Next item is a proclamation recognizing Second Chance Month, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to read the proclamation. And I think Tiffany's here to help us out with this, too. Thanks for being here, Tiffany.
County of Buncombe proclamation for Second Chance Month. Whereas nearly all incarcerated individuals will eventually leave prison or jail and return to communities across the state in which approximately 600 citizens returned to Buncombe County from incarceration in state prison in 2022. And whereas formerly incarcerated individuals face many hurdles in securing employment, housing, transportation, and healthcare, made even more challenging during a global health crisis. And whereas working with formerly incarcerated people to create opportunities for them to be productive members of society benefits their families and communities in many ways, including improving safety and preventing and reducing crime. And whereas efforts are underway at the federal, state, and local levels to establish programs and policies focused on removing barriers that prevent formerly incarcerated people from pursuing healthy and productive lives. And whereas in 2017, the North Carolina General Assembly established the State Reentry Council Collaborative, SRCC, aimed at studying the needs of people re-entering their communities and to increase the effectiveness of local reentry councils. And whereas in 2022, the Buncombe County Reentry Council served approximately 220 of returning citizens, with 147 reporting securing full-time permanent employment. And whereas North Carolina's Reentry Action Plan outlines strategies for supporting and enhancing current reentry initiatives across North Carolina and highlights evidence-based strategies for addressing challenges faced by justice-involved people and their families. Whereas North Carolina's investing in juvenile crime prevention councils has led to over $600,000 in Buncombe County community to support 200 at-risk youth in FY22, creating savings in victims' societal and justice system costs. Whereas nonprofits, faith-based groups, local reentry councils, employers, and educational institutions, among others, across North Carolina play a critical role in providing resources important to successful reentry and decreasing stigma by raising awareness of the challenges faced by formerly incarcerated people as they re-enter the community. And whereas Buncombe County Justice Services is proud to be a partner in offering second chances through its jail diversion and reentry services. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this 18th day of April 2023, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim, April 2023 is Second Chance Month, a time to recognize the importance of helping individuals, communities, and agencies across the country appreciate their role in supporting the safe and successful reentry of millions of people returning from incarceration each year. And signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for the incredible work that you do each and every day in this community. I'm going to let Tiffany.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the proclamation. I'm going to introduce members of our local reentry council to accept this proclamation on our behalf. Brent Bailey is the coordinator of the local reentry council, and he has several members here with him as well.
Good evening. I'm Brent Bailey. I have with me Amanda Layton and Jean Edison. We're all directly impacted people who have benefited from second chance opportunities. And so on behalf of the scores of citizens of Buncombe County who need second chance opportunities, I want to thank you all for this proclamation. And I want to thank this governing body for your leadership and how you continue to support second chance programs and second chance opportunities in things like establishing the Justice Resource Center, supporting the specialty courts, supporting diversion programs, pre-trial relief, supporting reentry programs. It really does make a difference. And so because of your leadership and your support, people like myself and Amanda and Jean are out here not just surviving, but actually thriving. And so we just want to thank you for this proclamation on behalf of all the citizens of this county who are benefiting from second chance opportunities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. Excuse me. Okay. Time for the county managers' report. And I believe one item is going to be an update from Assistant Commissioner DK Wesley on the Asheville Community Reparations work.
Good evening, Chair Newman and commissioners. I'm here today to provide your quarterly update on the reparations commission. I've been here, it's been long, less than a quarter since I've been here. So we're committed to providing a generalized quarterly update, and then when we have recommendations or new informations to share with you regarding the reparations commission, we'll, we'll come back before you. By way of an overview, I'll start with an update on the work that you authorized to the reparations commission's immediate recommendation to stop the harm, which was accompanied by an audit. After that, I'll share the commission's progress and what you can expect to look forward to in the coming months. Joining remotely is Christine Edwards of Civility Localized, who is the project manager for the Community Reparations Commission. Christine will support any, answering any specific questions that you may have about any project activities. I would also like to acknowledge Brenda Mills, City of Asheville Equity and Inclusion Director, for being here in person today. We worked together for over a year now on this effort, and we've likely gotten to know each other more than we expected, but I appreciate Brenda's partnership on this. All right. So in response to the reparations commission's second and immediate final recommendation, since it convened in April 2022, this body authorized staff to collaborate with the commission and the city of Asheville to develop a scope of work and a request for proposals to select a firm to complete a comprehensive audit to ensure compliance with federal and state laws, regulatory bodies, codes of conduct, court orders, and consent degrees to allow for the acceptance and guarantees that the county and the city has ceased to inflict further harm on the African-American community. Soon after that authorization, we started to convene a work group, which included four members from the Community Reparations Commission, which was Ms. Babette Mays, Mr. Bernard Alafont, Dee Williams, and Osandu McPeters, along with county and city staff, developed a scope of work. At the commission's March 20 meeting, that work group presented a draft scope of work to the full reparations committee, commission, and supported moving that forward and combining that scope of work into a formal request for proposals. I'm happy to report that on yesterday, we released the request for proposals with a due date for June 8. During the period between yesterday and June 8, we will also hold a pre-submittable conference for any potential proposers. And so we want to give them the opportunity to learn more about the scope and to ask us any questions about what we're looking for in an audit. We hope that this additional time to ask questions will provide for pretty solid submittals and proposals for us to consider after those come in on, on June 8. Those same work group members will be participating in the evaluation of those proposals. They'll be participating in the selection of a firm. If we're successful in selecting a firm, we'll come back before you. We'll give you an update either way. But if we're successful, we'll be back before you with more information about that. In addition, we will need to ask you all to consider a intergovernmental agreement with the city of Asheville for a cost share. A part of that proposal, we're asking potential vendors to provide an outline, a detailed outline, on what, how they expect to complete the audit, how they will engage stakeholders. Additionally, we're asking them to share with us what they expect the level of effort to be, what the cost might be, and a timeline to complete the work. I don't know if it's me or this screen. It's probably me. Do y'all have any questions about the audit before we move into the general update on the commission? So on a previous update, we did a deeper dive into the impact-focused areas. We call those the IFAs. Again, that includes criminal justice, health and wellness, education, and housing. Today, I will just give you a general update on the work that's happening. They're continuing to meet in person and in community at various community centers at the YWCA as well, and working pretty intently on trying to develop recommendations for you all. What you see streamed on a monthly basis is the overall commission, but the work is actually happening in those small groups where they're reviewing information and data that they have, and really having really serious conversations about what the recommendations should look like. Again, they're open to the public, and they're in person. We recognize that some people may not be able to attend those in-person meetings, so the project team is working together to come up with a virtual viewing option in those different facilities. Again, the recommendations are developed at that level, and when ready, they will be submitted to the full commission for discussion and ultimately vote to determine what recommendations will come forward to this body and the city council to consider. All along the way, we have special staff, subject matter experts participating, legalists providing consultation as they create their recommendations. At our last update, we did share some difficulties that we were having around data and research and communication. We've made progress in all of those areas. We now have a structured data request and response process in place. In short order, we found that there is a high level of effort to connect the data and the research and the voices to the harm and the recommendations to, to move forward. But again, significant progress has been made since that last update. Want to thank you for providing additional research capacity so that we can move this work forward. As I mentioned before, city and county legal are available for consultation, but the recommendations that come forward to you will be 100% the responsibility of the reparations commission. Staff will provide feasibility and impact information to help decision-making and future implementation of those, of any recommendations that are approved by the governing bodies. Accordingly, if you, we want to make sure that you have a full understanding of the recommendations that are coming forward. We expect to provide information about the county statutory authority as it relates to the recommendations. And we also expect that there are some things that partners in the community will actually have the responsibility for potentially moving those things forward. So you can expect recommendations that are clearly city and county responsibility, and then recommendations that will have to work through our influence, more or less, to support moving those forward. As it relates to communications and public engagement, we contracted with the Terrier Collective to document that, the reparations progress. As you may recall, this is a group of young people out interviewing people, and they'll be creating collateral to share what has happened along the, the project. There are various opportunities for the community to stay tuned and provide input on this area. You have and will continue to see the commission and project team members in the community and at various collaborative events. Also, we're expecting to start featuring our IFA members on our WRES radio and our All right. So as we look ahead, we expect to continue to work through this commission's two-year term. Over the next few months, there will be a concerted effort to engage the community, specifically those most impacted, to ensure that the black voices and input can help to shape the commission's recommendations. To complement the collaborative current efforts and the appearances of those members in community, we're planning a community summit. Details are forthcoming, but one of the major goals of that event is to share and collect input on the efforts, but to lift up how those different recommendations, potential recommendations intersect with each other. We've had multiple conversations about multiple topics, and we see the intersectionality of all those things. And so we want to make sure that those recommendations, the way they intersect, lifted up for you all to consider. they intersect, lifted up for you all to consider. Finally, our next meeting is on Monday, April 24, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Harris Civic Center. You can expect to hear three in-depth updates from our IFAs, which will include criminal justice, housing, and education. And then we'll have a presentation from our, our very own Justice Services Director to provide more information and detail around how we do impact and can impact in the field of criminal justice. That's all I have. Y'all have any questions?
Thanks, DK. Appreciate the updates. I'll roll. Any other items?
No, sir. Thanks, Christine. You dropped off.
Okay. All right. Okay, we do not have any items under old business, so we come to new business. And the first item is consideration of a resolution regarding the Deverview Mountain property in Allison Danes. Our Parks and Rec Director is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk to you today about Deverview Mountain. I want to start off by giving you an overview of the Deverview Mountain property, which was brought to our attention through the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. Here you can see where the property is located in the Deverview community. There's a few locations that are here to show you the approximate distance from these pointed locations. The two pictures that you see show different views of the property overlooking the city of Asheville and Biltmore State, and one part of the property at the very top there. And then to the south, the other picture is showing where you can see Mount Pisgah, broad sweeping views from that top open area. This is another view here that you see, gives an overview of the project in relation to Nullessor Highway, Patton Avenue, and its general direction from I-240 and I-40. So as far as having a large view of exactly where this 342-acre piece of property is located. The current property status is that it is owned right now by a singly conservation-minded individual who purchased the property and has been working with the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy on a three-year option to buy this piece of property to secure a donation for the county. The funding status that they're currently looking at is they've gone through the potential land and water grant funding in the amount of $4.3 million for funding towards this piece of property, with the additional funding needed of approximately $4.5 million for a total of, a total project cost of about $8.8 million. I want to do, do want to note at this point that this piece of property was originally for sale for $10 million and was purchased at a reduced price by this singly individual-minded person who could go look at conservation for this piece of property. And that price that you currently see could potentially be lower if funds were to be raised earlier than the three-year allotment. So that price would go down if funding could be secured in two years, for example, or even two and a half years. Allowances in the NC-LWF Conservation Easement. So if that grant was to come to fruition, what it means is that the piece of property could be used for low-density, low-impact recreation and minimal infrastructure, such as trails, parking lots, restrooms, shelters, and observation platforms for viewing and observation, not only of the natural area, but would allow for educational groups to attend, as well as have educational kiosks at the top. And then, of course, we would be able to maintain the trails that would be up there, increase trails for access, and ensure the view shed of that piece of property. The expected timing of this is that the Southern Appalachian Highland Conservancy-owned ownership and county donation would potentially come as early as 2026, which would allow for an expected start for improvements to this property with the county in 2027. With that, the requested board action that brings me here in front of you today is approval of a resolution that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners has the intent to explore creating a county park or preserve the passive recreation and educational opportunities for our community. Staff has the direction and ability to partner with Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy on seeking state and federal funding, and staff may proceed with due diligence required for the establishment of the property as a park or preserve. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'll share a couple of comments. I shared last time some of the reasons I was excited about this, but I will say, we clearly are hearing from the community about their excitement around nature-based recreation. And when I was reviewing the, our comprehensive plan for tomorrow's meeting, it struck me there, some of the data that we've received back from the community as well. With that, it was 80% of our community that responded when we were doing the community engagement, that what they liked most about Buncombe County is our natural environment, mountains, our rivers, and, and all of that. And what also struck me was the top, top-ranked actions to prioritize. Number one was environmental conservation, and number four, though, was health and recreation, specifically including the expansion of parks and trails to provide a healthy lifestyle choices to all of our residents. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution.
There's a motion and second to approve the resolution for creation of the, planning and feasibility around the creation of the potential county park on Deverview Mountain. Further discussion?
I just want to make one, one comment, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the, the people that came to speak earlier, those from the neighborhood. You know, I kind of expected supporters to come out for this type of thing, but not necessarily from immediate adjacent neighbors to the property. So that's really cool and exciting. Wasn't necessarily guaranteed, you know, across, across the history of local government, when a parcel of land is going through a change, you don't always hear or see immediately adjacent neighbors come out in support of that change. So that's really cool, and it, and it means a lot. I'm really excited about this project. I'm excited about it, not just for the immediately adjacent neighbors, but just kind of like that, that next level of, of geography outright, the people of that kind of region of, of the city and the county. It's just a kind of transformative, really cool idea and access to, to nature in a, in a unique spot. So those are my comments.
All right. Well, I'll also just, I want to make a couple of comments. Really appreciate all the work of the Highlands Conservancy to identify this really, really exciting conservation and public lands opportunity for us. And as a lot of folks have pointed out, it's just, it is, it is a really unique opportunity to preserve such a significant piece of property, so close to the heart of the Asheville metropolitan area, to have an asset like this. And we are blessed, as everybody here knows, that we have, you know, millions of acres of federal land throughout western North Carolina and places like the Great Smoky Mountains National Park and Roan Highlands. But there is great value in having a place like this that people can go, that for literally tens of thousands of people will be accessible within, you know, a 10 to 15-minute easy trip to visit this property. And I remember when Carl Silverstein, the Director of the Highlands Conservancy, was talking about the property, and I had never been up there. I've learned, you know, from like, we heard tonight, so many people have been up there in the past, and, but I had never, never been on the property before, but then I asked him, you know, well, is there, are there any good views from the property? And he's like, you know, it's pretty good. It's pretty good. You should go check it out. And so it, it really is, I mean, it really is just really stunning and really truly unique in the way that you have this perspective of the heart of Asheville, downtown Asheville, the French Broad Valley, Mount Pisgah. And there's lots of pretty places in this part of the world, as folks know, but this, this is, it really is a unique spot, and I think it'll be greatly loved by people for generations to come. So thanks to everyone who came out to speak up for it and have worked to get it to the point that we're at this evening. So any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. It's approved, so we'll take next steps. Thanks again for everyone who came out. Okay. All right. The, and you're all welcome to stay, but you don't have to. So you will not be frowned upon for choosing not to stay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution for release of the Inca Intermediate School property, and Michael Free will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here today to request the release of Inca Intermediate School property from the deed of trust securing the 2015 limited obligation bonds issued by the county. So we got to this point, because about 2015, Buncombe County Schools needed an intermediate school. Schools can't issue debt, so the county owns the property where Inca Intermediate was built in order to fund the obligation and to secure the, the construction. The county in turn leases the property back to Buncombe County Schools to operate Inca Intermediate. In the meantime, between 2015 and now, Inca Fire Department requested that the Buncombe County Schools declare a piece of property surplus right on Jacob Holmway. It's less than an acre, and Inca Fire has its new station, substation number three on that site. In the years between 2015 and today, I've come for this board at least four times to request various releases to allow the trustee to subrogate or allow easements for water, sewer, DOT rights of way, et cetera, to come up and down Jacob Holmway because of the development occurring in that area. Inca Fire has now come to the county, to county schools, and to the bond council to request that the property that they're on be released and that they can own it free and clear. So the county schools are fine with that because they declared a surplus. They don't need the parcel, and they've already entered into a long-term lease for the property to the fire department. But Inca Fire is planning ahead. Their Inca Station number one on Pisgah Highway is 60 years old, and they know that they're going to have to replace that within the next few years. And if they own this parcel where number three is, they'll have a ready source of funding available to secure a new debt. Once, if this, if approved by the board and this property's released from the deed of trust, there's adequate security remaining on the deed of trusts because the obligations on our 40 Cox Avenue, Asheville High School, and Monford North Star will remain in place. And the board previously approved that when it entered into the lease between the county for the school property intermediate, that once the security was released, that the county would convey the property back to the schools. So once that happens, the county school says they will convey the property to Inca, and that will close that loop, and we won't have to come for the board for the Inca Intermediate School property again for a very long time, I hope. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
The next item is a budget amendment for closure of transfer facility project. John Hudson, our budget director, is here to present this item.
Good evening. This budget amendment is a follow-up to the project closure amendment brought at our last meeting for the Solid Waste Capital Projects Fund. That amendment listed the closure of the project at $500,000. The closure of the project is $10,488,616. This amendment closes the remaining balance of $9,988,616. The project savings of $18,167 discussed at our last meeting remains unchanged.
Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, John. All right. We have a couple of announcements. Actually, do we have, have any board items tomorrow? Oh, thank you. All right. On the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, we have one reappointment. I'll make a motion to reappoint Hunter Guzman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the Board of Adjustments, we have one reappointment. I'll make a motion to reappoint Andy Ball.
Second.
Actually, hold on one moment. Has Andy served two full terms? Says he has served two terms. How long are the terms on Board of Adjustments?
Three years.
They're three years. And a lot of our boards are, are, is three years the most common or four years? Two years is most common. I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading the note. Okay. All right. So there, so they're three years, and there's a request that, so he's, Andy's serving as Chair of the Board, and there's a request to contend, to appoint for a third term, even though our, our policy is that we don't do that. So I'm sorry, I didn't see the note prior to, just a moment ago. Commissioners, any?
From a process perspective?
Yeah. Thoughts or questions about this?
Yeah. Just from a process perspective, if we have that policy in place and, and there's a recommendation or need to deviate from it, is there anything we need to attend to?
When that policy was adopted, put in the safety valve that if, as, as circumstances prevail, you can overrule that and proceed.
Are we appointing him to a full second term?
Third term.
Third term. Okay. Full.
And, and again, I'm sorry, now I just asked this, but the, the most common length of terms for our boards and commissions is two years or four years? Or is it just kind of all over the board? But a lot of them are four years, aren't they? I mean, we have a lot of boards that are four years, don't, don't we? We, you know, we don't have to make this decision on the spot. He will serve in this role until we make a decision on this. So if we don't make a decision, he will continue to serve until we, basically continue to serve until we tell him that we appoint someone, if we chose to appoint someone different. We could just sort of reflect on this a bit more, or, or we could go ahead and make a decision. I, you know, we do have a policy. It's not, we can make exceptions to it. We have made exceptions. I can't think of the last time we've made an exception to this particular policy. We have made some exceptions to the, like, the residency requirement in Buncombe County when there were some unique circumstances that really argued for a person being appointed to a particular position, even though they don't reside in Buncombe County. So do folks want to just take some more time to think about this, or do you want to just make a decision?
Sure. So this, this has been a, a difficult board to recruit people for. I would generally say I'm against exceptions, except for the fact that, that there are very few experienced members who have served as long as Andy has, and it seems like the type of board that we'd want someone to, who's, has, has experience dealing with really complex quasi judicial issues, to stay at the helm of until we figure out a long-term solution.
You know, I'm sure Andy's doing a great job here. He's very well qualified for this. I guess my only concern about this is if we start doing this, the reality is there are lots of great people whose experience would be considered valuable. I mean, if we, if we do it here, I guess I mean, if we, if we do it here, I guess I'm just concerned, why not do it? There'll be lots of other times, and, and how do, why don't we say no to other people who are doing a great job and serving? So I, but I guess in a way, I would, part of the, as I just think about the policy, you know, some, some boards are two years, some boards are three years. I mean, in a way, kind of what might make more sense is to have a total number of years that we're saying, hey, like, this number of years, because if someone's only served two terms, it's four years, like, well, that doesn't actually seem very long. If someone wanted to keep serving, then maybe, maybe serving another term would be entirely appropriate, because that would actually be less time than Andy's already served here. So it seems that the two-term policy, in a way, as I'm just sort of thinking aloud a bit here, in a way seems somewhat arbitrary. So I wonder if we might want to give some more discussion around the larger policy on this, too. So if we, if we do decide to go ahead and appoint Andy, I would, I would recommend that we look at the policy and either decide to reaffirm it so that we kind of communicate to folks that we're not planning on making more exceptions to this, so please don't ask unless there's a really strong reason, or maybe we, maybe we make some modifications to the policy. So, those are my thoughts. Any other comments?
Normally, I would agree with you, but we're at the time now, a critical point in that we're looking at the new comp plan, and I think it's important that we have experienced people on that board, and I would like to see an experienced person guiding the board now, you know, as leader of it, because that's critical. This is not the time to train a new chair, I don't think.
Well, the person who's appointed wouldn't necessarily have to become chair, they could pick other experienced Board of Adjustments members.
Yeah, but if you take the chair off.
I, I hear you.
I would say whatever we do, let's have a stopgap for the very likely event that we won't have more people applying. People tend to roll off this board pretty quickly, so we might find ourselves in the exact same spot pretty quickly. So I'd say not, the exceptional circumstance not being his experience, but truly his, the fact that we have zero applications for this after multiple months of waiting.
Yeah. And as a point of order, this by statute are three-year terms.
By statute, those are three-year terms, right? By state statute, yeah. And so we've had this position open, and no one's applied. Yep.
I'm willing to make the motion to reappoint Andy Ball.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to reappoint Andy Ball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. All right, Andy Ball's reappointed. Those are all the Board of Adjustment, or those are all of the Boards and Commissions items. We do have a couple of announcements. On April 19th at 9:00 AM, the county commissioners will hold a comprehensive plan joint work session with the Planning Board at East Asheville Library, 3 Avon Road, Asheville NC 28805, on April 25th at 8:30 AM, Commissioners' Budget Work Session at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On May 2nd at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville, and May 2nd at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. There's a need for a closed session. Mr. Free, would you explain the purpose?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, four have three prospective economic development matters to bring to the Board's attention, and under 11.1A, three have three legal matters. One, just to discuss with the Board, a potential legal matter, and two matters which are existing litigations. One is Pickens versus Hendricks at our United States District Court for the Western District of North Carolina, case 21CV30, and also Hyatt versus Miller at our United States District Court for Western District of North Carolina, file number 19CV250, and we're looking for direction from the Board on these matters.
Is there a motion to go to a closed session?
Second, I can.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session, and when we come back out of closed session, the Board will not make any decisions, we'll just adjourn the meeting.